I'm calling the meeting in order at seven o'clock. The first agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance and on this day of September 11th, if we also could keep in our memory the victims and the heroes of that day, I would appreciate it. If anyone would see it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Next order of business is a review and approval of the minutes of the August 14th meeting. And before I do that, I would like to appoint Bill if he'll sit in for Jane and Michael for Eric. Okay, so you'll be voting members this evening. Can we just have those two members? Okay. The only comment I had was that under the Stormwater Regulation Update Committee?
Yep.
So Diane, you want to follow up on that, but we were also noting that Bill had agreed to serve as an alternate if we needed an alternate on that committee.
Okay. And they were no, we did not set up a committee at the meeting in June.
No.
I went back and I checked the minutes and didn't, so I guess it's open for appointments and discussion.
Okay.
A couple of people have expressed interest. I know that Gretchen has and she's going to be joining us a little bit later.
Okay, we'll do that at the end of the meeting then. Okay. But just that note, is there a motion to approve? Was anyone at the meeting?
Yeah.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone abstaining?
Janice.
Motion carries. There are, if anyone is here for the SCG management or the Eric DeWitt applications, those are going to be continued. Okay.
And we have not notified the butters on this application. We just have notified them on the other application.
Okay.
So we don't have to continue that to a date certain, but the Eric DeWitt one we do.
Oh, okay.
And he's asked for it to be continued until the October meeting, which is October.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay. October 9th.
Okay, so under regular business, we have Hershey Lane LLC for preliminary conceptual consultation for plans for an approximately 12.8 acre parcel located at 767 Hershey Lane, which is off of a Class 6 road.
I'm going to excuse myself and sit out in the audience.
Okay. So then, there's no voting, but I mean, if we were voting Diane, I would have you step in as the alternate. Before we get into any discussion, I just want people to understand what this particular application is. This falls under the preliminary conceptual consultation as opposed to design review or a full application. The regulation is 2.01 of our zoning ordinance regulations and the, so notification to a butters has not been done. This is really just an opportunity for the applicant to come before the board and solicit input on an idea. The, you know, it's all in general terms, so it's really about the review of basic concepts of a proposal or suggestions and it's about assisting them in resolving any problems with meeting various requirements that they may have questions of in order to, you know, bring the design forward. So really, the discussion needs to be kept in very general terms. We, the desirability of the type of development that they're looking to do, proposals under the master plan of how this might fit into the master plan, the presentation to the board of anything regarding like surveys or engineering plans or anything that's similar to that are not permitted at this level because there's been no butler notification. And it's incumbent on the chair to be careful that we don't get into those kind of discussions. So everything should be at a general level. Tax maps are permitted, any kind of soil survey maps, things of that level, anything general are allowed. Again, this is a consultation between the parties, none of it is binding on either party. And that is it. So why don't we go to the applicant, if you could please introduce yourself?
My name's Alex Monstero, I'm the representative of Hershey Lane LLC. I apologize, you may have in your packets, I'm not sure, Diane may have pulled it, but...
It's a yield plan.
Right, a yield plan that we had submitted, which could be a conventional subdivision plan or a yield plan for a conservation subdivision. So I didn't know that that shouldn't have been submitted, so you may have that if you do. This is the parcel, this white parcel here that we're discussing. One of the reasons we wanted to come before the board in this preliminary fashion is because of some of the unique characteristics of this parcel. It's off of a Class 6 road of Hershey Lane, so... The road becomes Class 6 here. This is what you guys probably travel is Hershey Lane and it comes a Class 6 road here. And our parcel is here right off of that. What I have marked in the green is open space or conservation land that surrounds us and what I have marked in the orange is four plates multi-family development that surrounds us. And what this parcel is zoned for is R2 zoning for single families on half acre lots. So in trying to come up with a design for this lot, we've, we've thought a lot about it and what's the best use of this parcel? A conventional subdivision, we have a yield plan that can produce 13 conventional subdivision lots at that half acre. It would preserve no open space and it would create about 1,000 feet of town road. Additionally, we'd like the idea of doing conservation subdivision, which would allow us to condense that development, fits in with the goals of the master plan to do that. And we think it would be a good plan for this parcel because it ties some of these large open space corridors together. As you can see, if this was, if this parcel was all green or had a sliver of development here and was mostly green, it would tie all that land together, which I think would be a, a good benefit to the town. And this land here is a farm, so it's not developed land at this time, it's an active farm. And some of this other land is in perpetual conservation easements or it's common land for some of these bigger developments. So we think that would be a great thing, but we're hoping to get the input of the board of what they thought. Do you think a conventional subdivision here would be better? A conservation subdivision may be better? Condensing the development the most that we can would be best. And then the, the second thing that we are facing that's unique about this parcel is that it's on a Class 6 road. So the next step after talking with you as the planning board is to go to the town council and talk to them, or the selectmen, I'm not sure. Town council, yeah.
So the, the design concept is for single family?
We have designs for all sorts of different things. So the conventional subdivision, the plan that you guys have would be a single family conventional subdivision that we could do. We can do a conservation subdivision and create single family lots. We can do, we've come up with many conceptual duplex designs or fourplex designs. I had a conversation with Diane about going to the zoning board to get a variance to do fourplexes or multi-family on this lot, since we're surrounded by multi-family. That's something that is still being worked on by the town attorney and by Diane and myself. If the planning board thought in a conceptual fashion, no, this is all fourplexes out there, we'd love to see fourplexes really condensed so we can get the most open space. Conceptually, we can get 75% open space on this parcel. It's a 12.8 acre parcel. If we were able to do multi-family, we could preserve 75% of that, which is about nine and a half acres. That would require a variance and some more steps for us to take before we came back to the planning board.
But the current concept is, or coming to the planning board now for conceptual, you know, discussions would be single family under the current zoning?
Yeah, I had hoped to go through and show you guys some, what a single family plan could look like, what a conservation subdivision plan could look like.
Yeah, that gets into design review.
And so we're not there yet. And so I think the next step would probably be for us to apply back to the planning board for a design review and maybe go through that process with you guys. Unless someone said conceptually, I hate fourplexes, we definitely don't want fourplexes on this lot, we don't need to see a plan, or we love duplexes, duplexes have been really successful in New Market, there's been great duplex development, you guys should look into that. If anybody had strong feelings about those things, without seeing plans and being able to feel it and touch it and see what it looks like to have that open space preserved, I know that's a difficult ask.
So if you were thinking of pursuing a variance to do multi-family, you'd have the same number of units?
Right.
They would...
So we get 13 lots under a conventional subdivision. Under a conservation subdivision, there is some allowance for bonuses, so we can get a maximum of 15 lots in a conservation subdivision. So in all of our plans, the maximum amount of units that we've come up with is 15. So going from that 15 lots that you'd get in a conservation subdivision, we could, we could do 15 multi-family units and that's the maximum that we would, that we would, at this moment, that we've planned on or designed for. And this is a 12.8 acre parcel and the zoning is half acre lots, so in theory, that's not overburdening the land.
So relative to the master plan, I think that the, you know, be my position anyway as a member, that a conservation subdivision, particularly given if that's all conservation land around it, would be preferable. Does, do any other members have anything that they would, any ideas on that? Conventional subdivision versus conservation subdivision?
Yeah, if we just talk single, you know, if we just take the basics and say, single family.
Yeah, because if that's allowed under the zoning now?
Right.
You know, what does...
Would you rather see a conventional subdivision with 1,000 feet of road or a conservation subdivision with much less, maybe 400 feet of road, condensed development and preserving that open space? Is that something that you guys think would be a good fit for this parcel?
I mean, I have a bias, I think everything should be a conservation subdivision, but I'd like to hear other thoughts of the board to be able to, you know, assist the applicant.
Yeah, I think I'd agree with that. You mentioned that if we went that route, it would tie the existing conservation land together, right?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, if you can imagine, even if half of this parcel was green, it connects, you know, these kind of, this small piece with some of these bigger pieces and allows that to all be preserved. And right now, it's vacant land, so, but this would allow it to be preserved in perpetuity, which all of these parcels are, which is good for the wildlife and the natural resources.
And aren't our wells out here now?
Yes.
Okay.
It is, yep. But the deed to that piece of property preserves all of the land in that farm as conservation land in perpetuity forever and ever.
So just bring more conservation land.
Right.
So if you went to, you went to the 13 houses?
Yep.
How many bedrooms in a house?
So are, does that, can I show building plans?
Those are really getting too detailed.
Oh, I know, I was going to make a decision on how I look.
Oh.
I wanted to...
Well, there's nothing in our regulations that if we, someone goes to a conservation subdivision, that they're limited to bedrooms.
No matter what we did, we would have the same building. It wouldn't affect how we would do two-bedroom units.
This would be serviced with town water and sewer?
The town water and sewer is adjacent to this parcel, yes.
And the road would be upgraded to Class 5 road, what conditions in either case of a conservation subdivision or a conventional, except the access road could be, you know, of a different configuration, wouldn't necessarily have to be a public road, but it would still have to be built to those standards.
To town standards. So it could be like, isn't sewer, what's the sewer farm road, I can't remember any of that, Ledgeview or, I think that's a private road, but built to town standards.
And so to, to just show you here, to gain access to the parcel, so this part, right now, exists as Class 6 road, it could actually be upgraded just for us to access the parcel.
And that's where you'd need to go to the town council?
Right.
To get approval to upgrade and build on a Class 6.
Right.
And there would have to be emergency turnarounds and get other, a cul-de-sac or something to allow for access and vehicles to get in.
So Janice, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, it's just that our regulation doesn't give us any...
If it helps, regardless of the size of the lot, we would build the same house. You know, whether we did half acre lots under a conventional subdivision or very small lots on a, on a conservation subdivision, it doesn't change what we're planning on building, which are small, two-bedroom houses.
You said two bedrooms?
Two bedrooms and an office. 1,500 square feet maximum, we're trying to build small.
Any other thoughts on that, conservation subdivision versus conventional? Sure, Diane?
I was just going to say, I wholeheartedly agree with Val and Jamie. Jamie?
Sarah.
Sarah, forgive me. That, you know, ideally, we'd like to see conservation subdivisions and, you know, we have some great examples here in New Market that have worked very, very well.
Absolutely.
And we're very proud to be able to showcase those. And we know that that concept works to preserve the natural features of the land and to create development that fits in with the harmony, if you will, of the community and the natural heritage of the town, which is very important to us all. I did talk with, I'm sorry, the applicant, Alex, I'm sorry, Alex, about different options. And I would strenuously oppose any type of townhouse attached dwelling units in that location. I have the copy of the R2 zone here, which talks about the purpose, which is to provide a transition between high-density development, which is shown in the orange, and the R1, which is a more rural residential zoning type with two-acre zoning. And I also have done some research in the town's records. I researched the master plans going back to 1991. And in all of our master plans and also the most recent update that we did in 2015 on the housing chapter, we talk about the imbalance of residential multi-family and rental housing here in New Market. We have over 50% of our housing stock in multi-family housing, we have over 50% in rental housing. And we have time and time again stated in the record of the master plan, that is the goal of the town of New Market, to seek a more balanced approach and to see and encourage the establishment of single-family houses, a way to balance that. And we're not saying that we want to exclude multi-family housing, but I think there was a conscious effort on the part of the town when they changed the zoning back in, I want to say it was in early 1996, when they changed it to the R2, that the planning board and the town felt very strongly that we have, we have enough, we have enough multi-family housing, we really want to preserve the rural qualities of the town. And I think we have, you know, a track record to show that it is in fact working, the zoning that we have. So I would not be an advocate for a zoning change or for a variance for multi-family housing.
Thank you. So in the concept of multi-family, you're not, you're not thinking about apartments or rentals? Is this like in, basically another sewer farm?
Sure. So we actually are, it would look a lot different than sewer farm, we'd like to do one-story. Duplexes, we think is the ideal, as Diane said, R2 is supposed to be a transition zone. We're surrounded by fourplexes, the outskirts of those fourplexes are single families. Is duplexes not a great answer to combat the spot that we're in? We're in this donut hole surrounded by this multi-family.
And you're not near any other residential.
Right. So to us, duplexes is the perfect answer to that. If anybody liked duplexes, I know there's a duplex development being built in town that's wonderful and beautiful and they've got a lot of those under contract and we're really excited for them.
Are you referring to the Hershey Green?
Yeah.
Okay. And that has been very successful.
And they're beautiful, you know, they look...
So if you're thinking of that concept, um...
But Val, real quick, even, even if we did do fourplexes, like if we went to the maximum and we, we got approved to do fourplexes, we want to do everything single, uh, single level living. So they wouldn't be what you typically see in town as like the double level townhouse style units. We'd like to do what would look like a duplex doubled, you know, the Hershey Green duplex in theory could be a good model, since I can't show you our model, and we'd double that and it would be a fourplex. And the reason duplexes and fourplexes appeal to me and to us as a design is because people like living, people who are older and aging like living next to somebody, it gives them some comfort. And it also cuts down on costs, so people like me who are newly married and have a new family and can't afford a $700,000 detached dwelling in New Market could maybe afford the, a half of a duplex. And it gives you an immediate neighbor and maybe a friend. And duplex development to me is the, the win-all and a good compromise and, and maybe perfect for this location.
So if you did your, your number of units in a duplex design concept, what's the differential between the, the, I would say, two questions? The conservation area, the, the open space that would be preserved versus just a conventional open space development?
They're equal, actually. So a conservation subdivision, we could preserve somewhere around eight plus acres conceptually. In a duplex development, we could also preserve eight plus acres.
Would you have the same purveyous coverage under either?
Similar. I haven't calculated it exactly, these aren't engineered plans, but it would be similar. The road length would be exactly the same, so no matter what we do to get into the parcel that's 280 feet of road, under the conservation subdivision or the duplex subdivision, the duplex subdivision only needed 110 feet of additional road, where the conservation subdivision needed some more. So they, it needed about 380 feet. So we have 200 feet less of road under a duplex subdivision.
And if it was a duplex, would there be a homeowners association?
Likely.
Because that has benefit from protection of property values, right?
Especially when there's conservation land, we feel like homeowners associations are just a great thing, we've only seen them succeed. I, I've heard stories of them not doing good, but in my experience in doing this, they've only succeeded in protecting the open space and managing the shared areas really well.
Any other thoughts on that?
I, I would love to see the single-family homes go in there. I think we have a lot of multi-family homes in New Market and it would be nice to see more single-family homes.
Sure.
So all the duplex units, they'd be on a quarter acre lot?
Around there, yeah, depending on, you know, depending on the lay of the land and slopes and the wetlands and things like that. But they would be on smaller lots. And that also depends on getting a variance from the zoning board, but let's say we would put a duplex unit on a half acre lot, which is what's, what it's, R2 zoning is half acre lots. And that's something that I've spoken with Diane about, you know, how do we go and get a variance from the zoning board? We want to do, let's say we're going to say duplexes, how do we meet the dimensional requirements of the R2 zone, which doesn't allow duplexes?
We have a local example where there was a development with duplexes on two acre lots and it was very difficult to do the duplexes because of the size of the lots and the limitations with the width of the lots and so forth. And as it turned out, the developer changed, well, there was a change in the developers' for the land, but they built actually single-family homes in the end and didn't build the duplexes. So if you don't have a lot of land area, and that was under the M2 zoning, M2, six units per acre.
Which, where?
The one on Nichols Ave, Washington Street.
Oh, oh, behind, yeah.
Right. So that's at the same density that's currently allowed in the R2 zone. And, you know, it could be problematic to fit them on a quarter acre size.
So they would have, basically the answer is they would have to fit on the lot. And we are proposing a smaller building footprint, so 1,500 square feet is a much smaller home footprint than you might typically see on a half acre lot. But with setbacks and with wetland setbacks and with slopes and with the driveway and the garage and the home footprint, we would make it work to do the smallest lots possible that fit that footprint and still is good development. And the reason we do the smallest lots possible is to conserve the most amount of open space, not because we want these tiny lots, but...
I'm in favor of duplex, as long as we can go for that conservation field, given the cost, or the need for affordable housing in the, on the coast here and the, the way needed, like no one can afford these single-family houses. And they don't need these two acre lots.
That was brought up at a meeting, actually, yesterday, I was at, was the affordability index.
Yeah.
So would that be the concept, that are you thinking as a developer, if you're building duplexes versus single families, the cost of those units would be lower to the market?
Sure, absolutely.
Which is this, which is what's happening at Hershey Green?
Even if it's minimally less, it's a benefit to somebody who just moves down that bracket. If it brings it from, you know, I'll just toss out 325 to 295, that market of under 300 is captured, that couldn't have been captured if we built a single-family house.
Janice?
No, I, I agree because the houses cost is so halfway uncoupled to start. I would like a single home, to be honest with you, but I do realize, what you said, it's hard for couples to get started today. We don't have the right to deprive them of getting started, my opinion.
Sure.
Can I ask you a question? I, you sell real estate in the area, what is the price range of the duplexes up off of Hershey?
Hershey, Hershey Green? They're, they're right under four, but they're fairly large, they're three bedrooms.
Yeah.
Multi-story?
Correct, and they're multi-story, three bedrooms, they're large. Two-car garages.
Two-car garages, too, right.
Right.
But it's really not...
Yeah, there's not...
It's not a real affordable option for people.
No, there's not, I don't think there is an option in New Market right now, like you are proposing. And a lot of it is because there's the land value is so expensive and the development costs. The main case in point is Rockingham Green.
Yeah.
You know, those are up over 500.
Yeah. Road, road costs drive the price a lot of times in development to make each lot affordable in my experience and the, the infrastructure costs. And so when we can condense development and do like a conservation subdivision with duplexes and build the minimum amount of road and the minimum amount of infrastructure to keep those costs down, those costs are passed on to the buyer.
And it's not like you'd be looking for higher density?
Right.
Any other...
Yeah, the most we, we have said is 15, which was the maximum we've been... Yeah, the most we, we have said is fifteen, which was the maximum we've ever. So if it was a duplex plan, it would be seven duplexes and one single-family.
All under one association.
Correct, yeah. And just to speak to the millennial and the fifty-five-plus capturing that market, we think that there's a unique ability for those two groups to co-mingle. So the people who are moving into retirement and they're downsizing, they don't want this big house on fifteen acres anymore that all their clutter is in, so they're, they're getting rid of that and they're moving into a condo or a duplex or a smaller single-family house. And then there's the, the second market is the people coming into the market, the new home buyers who need an affordable or a smaller option, and they don't want this big giant house to take care of and pay all the bills on. And we think they can work well together. You know, the younger couples can help the fifty-five-plus couples that are all living in this community together, and it could be a pretty spectacular community in practice.
In our most recent master plan, we talk about pro-generational housing and advocate that as an option for people to age in place.
Absolutely.
And so our, our master plan really supports that idea.
And you have a community to support that. Any other comments?
That's in the level, level house with that, too.
Absolutely.
Where's the nearest sidewalk?
There is sidewalks.
There is now.
Right here, there's a sidewalk. Yeah, this is all sidewalks.
All sidewalks.
And the sidewalks lead all the way to downtown. So in theory, someone who was excited about walking to downtown could come right out of this house and walk right downtown and go visit the new Brown's Bagels.
Good.
Jamie, you need, when you speak, your microphone needs to be down. Any other comments from any of the board members or thoughts to share with the applicant?
I agree with Danielle, and I just wanted to say that duplexes are usually more energy-efficient, so that's another reason, I would say, to build them because you save a lot of energy for cooling, for heating. It's something to consider.
Definitely.
So what I'm hearing is that if you were to pursue a variance, it sound, in, in, that the board would be in favor of that. Diane brings up some very good points about multifamily, where I think this is a different concept and it's a transition.
It's duplex, yeah. I wasn't referring to duplexes in my comments. I was referring to, or the quadruplexes, which I think we talked about as one of the options at one point.
Yep.
So I think there's consensus among these members of the sitting in this evening that we think that would probably be a good thing.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your time and your input. I really appreciate it, and you've given us a good direction to move forward in, and I will be back once I pursue all of those avenues that need to pursue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing for application for boundary line adjustment. Oh, wait, let me go back. So let me do continuation. Next is the SCG management. They have a request for extensional conditions of approval for two Bennett Way, tax map U four, lot four-dash-one in the B-one zone. So this is not actually a public hearing?
No, it's not. And we were told, they have asked for a continuation of their conditions so that they can pursue their project.
So do you need a formal?
However, they are not ready with plans yet. I've asked them to bring forward a plan, and then we, we put it on the agenda.
Okay, so they don't.
And I did speak with Skip, me and So, yesterday, and he said that they haven't moved forward with it. As soon as they do, he'll let us know, and we can schedule it for a formal presentation to the board.
So you don't need a continuance?
Not in that particular application, not.
On the next application, this, this is one that we've accepted the application?
Yes.
So it's Eric DeWitt, the continuation of a public hearing for an application for site plan review at eighty-one Exeter Row, tax map U-three, lot one-thirty-seven, the B-one zone. The proposal is to remove the existing buildings and driveways and build a twenty-nine-hundred-and-twenty square foot two-story mixed-use building with associated parking, lighting, and drainage. Do I have a motion to continue that to the October?
No.
Ninth meeting?
Sure, I'll make a motion to move it to the October ninth meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Sarah? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item agenda is a public hearing for an application for a boundary line adjustment as requested by Marker Forty-four Holdings LLC, three, who own three, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, twenty-six Eagle Drive at tax map R-two, lots thirty-six dash nine dash one, thirty-six dash ten, and nine, thirty-six dash eight, thirty-six dash seven, thirty-six ten dash two. Wayne and Kimberly Banks, five Eagle Drive at thirty-six dash nine dash two. John and Kimberly Parrott at seven Eagle Drive, lot thirty-six nine dash three. Jacques and Marie Navarre, nine Eagle Drive, thirty-six dash nine dash four. Richard and Jean Ormarde Vocable Trust at ten Eagle Drive, tax map thirty-six dash ten dash ten. Adam and Rosalie Moore at eleven Eagle Drive, thirty-six dash ten dash eleven. William and Cheryl Bunting at thirty thirteen Eagle Drive, tax map thirty-six, lot ten dash twelve. Dennis and Ruth Fioler at fifteen Eagle Drive, thirty-six dash ten dash thirteen. And Andrea Thorne at seventeen Eagle Drive, thirty-six dash ten dash fourteen. Virginia Cross at eighteen Eagle Drive, tax map thirty-six, lot ten dash six. Jeffrey McIntosh and Carity Blair at nineteen Eagle Drive, lot thirty-six dash ten dash fifteen. Andrew Coulter Jr. and Mary Flanagan at twenty Eagle Drive, thirty-six dash ten dash five. Julie Cathcart Vocable Trust at twenty-one Eagle Drive, thirty-six dash ten dash sixteen. Jeffrey and Susan Parks, owners of twenty-two Eagle Drive, thirty-six dash ten dash four. Drew and Darby Rebingnani at twenty-four Eagle Drive, lot thirty-six dash ten dash three. Wilfred and Freeabakis at twenty-eight Eagle Drive, thirty-six dash one dash one. And the Moody Point Community Association at lots, the owner of lots thirty, lot thirty-six dash nine dash five. All of these lots are in the R-one zone. The adjustment is necessary because the as-built plan for Eagle Drive does not match the deed description for the meets and bounds on the original recorded subdivision plan. This adjustment will correct the deeds. Also, there's a small section of land used for community mailboxes, which is currently owned by the Hill Homeowners Association, and they want to deed that to the Moody Point Community Association. So Janice, I need to step down as I'm involved with this, but I thought I would.
Okay, thanks for being.
Read all that for you.
Thank you.
And you may step in here.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Nice, yeah. Janice, will you just sit over here?
I can move over?
You can. Did you see my recommendation?
You're very well done.
You can tell she's been doing this for a while. Since Val did such a great job summarizing, I'll just give you a brief background. I'm Kim Parrott. I live at seven Eagle Drive, and I'm the president of the HOA referred to as the Hill at Moody Point. So we come before you for further consideration regarding several lot line adjustments required to complete our November twenty-seventeen subdivision approval that we received from the planning board last fall. And when we, after we got that approval, we went to Dusset survey and asked for them to do a survey. And once they did the survey, it was determined that Eagle Drive, which is a private road, did not conform to, the as-built did not conform to what the developer had originally set up, so therefore its deed is wrong. And several, and what we'd like to do is to go to single-family homes based on what we asked for last fall. So this plan was put together, and you all have a copy of smaller version of it. It's very busy because the as-built is different than what the, the original developer had set up. So I'll let Val talk from this point.
So, thank you, Kim. So Kim, in her packet, in your packets that you have, there's the reported plan, which is D-dash-twenty-one-four-seventy-one. And on that plan, they will show Eagle Drive, the meets and bounds of Eagle Drive. So as Kim mentioned, when this was all surveyed, the issue is, if you go to your last page, but the, the, the last sheet, but the front page of that really brings it, you know, what the issue is. So the dotted line here is where the road should have gone, but the black heavy line is really where the road is. So what you have before you in your set is a complete survey of the as-built. And I have highlighted that, the, the land that where the road sits in the middle of it is this orange. So the areas which are green are basically on the current reported plan. So, and they're owned by the homeowners association now, and under the reconfiguration that was approved by the plan or a few months ago, that lane will simply go to that homeowner. Okay? So those are the areas in green. And this obviously is the one I just referred you to, is the fact that the road was put way over here, where, as opposed to the location in the good. And this is all utilities as well, so it's not like you can move the road into the regular way. So this is the current as-built showing you. This process is really to, so that the association, before they start deeding the association land back to the homeowner, so that they can have their own land back, creating deeds, is to get this section cleared up, have a true as-built of existing conditions. And there's a few cases in the dark hash marshes, which are currently part of the homeowner's current deed, because it's the deed to the driveway in their house, and then that homeowner will just deed that to the association. So the association is responsible for the repair and the maintenance of this private one-way road. So this is really just kind of cleaning up, cleaning up the process so that then they can go through and do their, their deed again.
And the other thing we'd want to do is there's a, a little small rectangular piece down here, which houses the mailboxes. And the mailboxes are used not only for our association but other associations, so we would like to quickly deed that portion back to the, the overarching umbrella association with, which is Moody Point Community Association, and then they would take responsibility for that, which would be much cleaner from an association standpoint. Because otherwise, it would land on that person's property, and they would have liability, which would not be good.
And these appear throughout the community, so that would not be uncommon.
And keep in mind that we all pay taxes on the entire parcel, even though we don't currently own the entire parcel.
You argued that a couple months ago.
Yes, but there were, there are many new, new people here, so, just so that question doesn't come up, who's paying the taxes?
Any questions we can answer?
Any board members have any questions? Does any member of the audience have any?
Can we accept it first?
Do you want to accept it first? Okay. I remember when they came the first time, and hopefully all the rest of us are here so you understand what they're going through. I need, I'd like to have a motion to be made to accept the plan titled Lot Line Revision Plan for the Hill at Moody Point Homeowners Association Incorporated, dated August seventh, two thousand and eighteen, as being substantially complete and ready for technical review. Do I have a motion to, or Diane, did you want?
And that is just, that's my recommendation. And it does meet the completeness test, if you will, so the first order of business is to accept it for review.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the plan for review.
Second.
Okay, we have first and a second. Do I have any discussion on it? Okay, we're going to take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
We need a motion. We need a motion to approve the application.
This is just to accept it.
Yeah.
Okay, so now it's to, yes. I'm sorry, you didn't call the vote, though. It was unanimous vote to accept it for technical review. Okay.
Yes, that's what we just did. Now we're going to the second one. Don't rush us.
No, I wasn't, I just.
I need a motion to be, a motion be made to approve the plan subject to the following condition, which is the MYLA be stamped, certified, and dated by the licensed land surveyor prior to recording at the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds, the MYLA, and the three plan sets to be signed by the planning board chairman prior to recording.
I can make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
My second.
Okay. Okay, so let me take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a, oh, this is a question before you go?
Thank you.
Did anyone in the audience have any? I forgot to ask the audience members. That's where I was heading.
Are there any questions?
We can go open the public hearing and then close it?
Well, let's open.
Yeah, okay, I'd like to open the public hearing. If anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Then I'm going to close the public hearing at seven forty-two. Thank you very much.
We need another vote to redo what we just did.
We do nothing to vote?
Well, you're supposed to have a voting.
Okay, so what do you want to do?
So just redo the.
Votes, okay.
The vote, the second vote.
Okay, the second vote?
Not the first.
Just a vote? Okay. I messed up a little bit there, guys, I'm sorry. So I need a motion to be made to approve the plan subject to the following condition. Let me read it all over?
Sure.
Okay, oh, really? The MYLA be stamped, certified, and dated by the licensed land surveyor prior to recording at the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds, and the MYLA, and the three plan sets to be signed, and the planning board chairman prior to recording. Do you have a motion? Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I have one question. Do they already have a technical review set up?
No, there is no technical. When I say technical review, it's review by the board, consideration by the board.
Oh, okay, all right, because I know sometimes we have.
We have an actual committee set up.
Okay. I think this one's mine. I'm not sure. I think so.
Good job, Janice.
Thank you.
He has nice estates. Us, it's a tiny.
Thank you, Janice.
Okay, next order of business is chairman's report. Eric had nothing to report. I will report that I stepped in for Eric at a meeting yesterday with Diane and Steve Fornier, the town administrator, as well as Dale Pike, the chair of the town council. And we met yesterday just to develop an agenda for the joint meeting that will be held next Wednesday. And that will be getting published at some point fairly soon?
Yeah. So basically, we have five items, I guess, on the agenda. One is the town council is moving forward with, well, they did move forward with some goal-setting at their last meeting, and one of their goals, hot goal, was to look at the three gateways to town and look at it with an eye to redevelopment. And that's the section of Route one-oh-eight from the downtown up to the Durham Town Line, the section of one-oh-eight south of the downtown towards the New Fields Town Line, and the third being the gateway at Route one-fifty-two in the vicinity of the current B-three zone. And as part of that review, the town council is considering hiring a part-time economic development consultant to help provide some counsel and direction to the town in moving forward with some redevelopment plans for that area, possibly looking at the cost of extending utilities to the site out at Route one-fifty-two and coming up with some strategies for financing that. Of course, the, the Main Street area north is, the project that the state is doing is almost completed at this point, and they've put major investment in widening the roadways and putting in the bike lanes, and it's really been an enhancement with the sidewalks and so forth. And the town, as part of that project, replaced water and sewer. So that's an area that has quite a bit of potential, we believe, for redevelopment, and we're hoping the consultant will be able to identify some sites perhaps that might be developed and give us an idea of what kind of a return the town would expect if there were any, you know, further improvements that were needed and so forth. The other concern or item for.
Before we leave that, that's also, just also on the, on the economic development, the idea of hiring an economic development consultant, that also has come out of our Chapter Six master plan. So that was put onto the town council as one of the recommendations in Chapter Six, so that's kind of where that, that was coming from. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Secondly, there needs to be some discussion between the planning board and the council as to moving forward with the recommendations of the economic development committee. Some of the people who were here last year and the year before were the work that the planning board did in coming up with a skilled nursing facility overlay for the new road area. And the second recommendation concerned the area out on Route one-fifty-two and packaging that for zoning, possibly for a continuing care retirement community. And in order to, we, we need to have some further discussion in formulation of a policy position on that, whether or not the planning board will move forward. whether or not the planning board will move forward with endorsing those ideas and coming forward with a specific zoning proposal. But that's one of the things that we need to work towards as part of our work program in the next year, what kind of action we'll be taking on those recommendations. And so that's three. Four, we talked about the need to get back on track with our master plan updates. And in years past, we tried to do at least one chapter a year. It's a rather labor-intensive, onerous process oftentimes, depending upon the public participation level and so forth. But we really need to come up with a priority listing of what we want to pursue next. And we do have some resources available to us at this point that have been set aside through the capital reserve fund. Every year, we have about forty thousand dollars. As the question is, do we want to hire a consultant at this point to do a comprehensive update? Or do we want to focus on, you know, three or four areas and get that work under contract and started? And the last item is concerning the town's participation in the MS four program. As you know, the town has to come up with a long-range, five-year stormwater management plan. It's required by EPA, and it's based on the, a program that they call the MS four program. And October first, we'll be filing a notice of intent. There were some concerns when we were working on the stormwater regulations last spring, that perhaps the work that we were doing might be viewed as being kind of in conflict with an ongoing lawsuit, that the town has, is participating in. There's sort of a handful of municipal municipalities who have, through their coalition, have joined forces to appeal the MS four permit. And there's a feeling that it was not adequately tailored for New Hampshire's needs. It was more of an urban model after the Massachusetts program. So that's sort of the crux of the lawsuit. And we have not yet heard anything, but the town is partnership in that process. And if there is a decision to, where the town would have to, you know, amend this program, we could do so. But I think we were hoping to get some kind of a report, FOMA report from the town administrator on where that stands and how that ties in with the work we're doing, which is sort of running on a parallel course in updating our stormwater regulations. Did I cover that pretty much?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else that I overlooked that you wanted to add, Val?
No, just, um, in regards to the master plan, so particularly for new members, one of the roles of the planning board is to ensure that the master plan for the town is a living document, that it is kept updated in the various chapters. So the master plan typically will have a ten-year shelf life, like the, under statute, so that we should be updating the master plan, you know, every ten years. We've chosen as a board, decisions made years ago, to kind of go and tackle different chapters so that, you know, every chapter was being updated within a ten-year period. That said, there are definitely some chapters that haven't been looked at at all. And one of the discussion points that I had is do we, as a planning board member, members, you know, think about, are there chapters within the master plan that just, we shouldn't even have anymore? So it would be good for all of us to go back and review the master plan and think about, you know, do we need all the chapters that are there? And then I think there's, there are certain chapters that we are required to have by statute, and there are other ones that are optional. And maybe, that'd be great, Diane, if you could, if you could send out, if you have a minute, all the chapters, when the last update was?
Sure.
And whether that particular chapter under statute is required or optional?
Yeah, I think I put together a table like that at one point, and I can update it. One of the things, also, the state statute has added some new chapters, one of which is an energy component. And I know that the, the town council has a standing committee looking at energy and environmental issues. And, you know, maybe that's a, a chapter that we might want to incorporate. It's not required, it's optional.
So that would be good.
So maybe that's something, because there seems to be renewed interest in solar and different options, that might be an opportunity for, for a chapter to include.
So that?
That meeting.
Yes. Wednesday. And it's, we're starting at six o'clock. So we're going to be doing a six to seven, basically workshop with the council. And then the council will start their regular business meeting at seven. So six o'clock next Wednesday, encourage everyone to attend. Think about, you know, the five items that are going to be on the agenda. Diane will get that out to everyone as well. And, you know, just to bring, it's, it's basically a brainstorming session between the planning board and the council. As the planning board, we need an understanding where the town council is looking to have, you know, the, the, what direction they're looking to have the town go in, because they have to support us on any ordinances that we come up with. And to make sure that we're spending our time and budgetary money through the planning process that, that we're kind of on the same page. Otherwise, we just end up spinning our wheels. It gets to the council, and they're like, eh, we don't want to deal with that.
Can we ask, are there any other subjects that board members would like to include on the agenda with the town council to discuss?
Just have a quick question about the, the master plan chapters. Was it updated externally by an external consultant? Was it mostly internally done?
We have done it different ways. One year, we hired a consultant who worked side-by-side with me, and we put together a draft. That was the economic development chapter. And other instances, we worked with Strat Regional Planning Commission. Of course, they're able to access funding through different sources, Department of Environmental Services, coastal programs.
Future land use was part of that.
Future land use, so we were able to tap those funding sources and have one of the staff planners work with us. So the future land use, the existing land use, housing and demographics, Strat Regional helped us with. But we've tried all different, unfortunately, a lot of the grant money for community planning has sort of dried up, unfortunately, so there isn't a whole lot of money out there for that purpose. But we figure out, try to figure out a way. And also, we've worked with committees and sounding boards and tried to do it in-house, which makes it a very.
That's very difficult.
Difficult process, because we don't have a lot of resources. But it's worked out pretty well.
Will we be discussing traffic primarily on one oh one with the whole gateway topic?
It's not designed to be a highway corridor plan per se. We have talked about that, but we have talked about updating the transportation section because that is an area where there's money available for infrastructure improvements and their various programs. So that's a good point.
You go down south in the morning, like towards one oh one there, and it's backed up all the way to downtown.
Yeah. That's surprising.
So that may be something to take up on that gateway?
Yeah.
You know, one of the issues of that gate, of the gateway relative to traffic.
And of course, we had, we were, we were working with the state to put in bike, bike lanes there. We didn't end up having enough money, so we had to sort of nix that project. But I think there's interest in maybe having the state at some point in the future take that on as a state transportation project because the lanes do need to be widened, and safety improvements need to be made.
So are there any other committee reports?
We have some appointments we need to make.
Two committees?
Yes. The Environment and Energy Committee. Toni Weinstein has been, we're trying to recruit some members to join their efforts. And we don't have a planning board liaison on that committee. And I promised her I would suggest it to the chair at the meeting tonight to see if we could drum up some interest.
Is there any interest? Who's serving on that committee now? You have county council member?
I'm not sure of our town council practice in here, so. I know Toni is involved with it. I don't know who else is on that committee. But they did have a meeting like last Thursday or Thursday, April. They have a meeting regularly.
Is there any interest particularly from many board members who are not serving on committees?
Yeah.
Okay?
All right.
There may be an appointment in your future.
Okay. And the second, we discovered that we didn't appoint a CIP alternate this, this year. We are in the middle of doing our CIP right now. We had our first meeting last Wednesday. So we're looking at, previously Jane's board.
Jane is, right.
Jane is the regular committee liaison from the planning board. But we usually have an alternate because, you know, she can't make all the meetings because she works full-time. I feel like I should know what CIP is. I'm sorry, capital improvement program. We're required by the statute, if we have impact fees, we have to have a capital improvement program that spans a six-year period that shows that the town has a plan for providing for orderly development of infrastructure and facilities to accommodate future growth. So that's like one of the prerequisites for having an impact fee program. So every year, we have a, we get together during the month of September and have several meetings, and we crank out this forty, fifty-page document which provides recommendations to the town council for capital improvements to be integrated into the budget process for the town meeting, or for the town budget process.
So we definitely need an alternate for that because the, the alternate will eventually become the appointee. There will be a new alternate. That's a, that's a committee where you really need to be involved over multiple years to have that continuity. And it's, it's imperative that somebody on the planning board serves on that.
Right. And we try to have meetings, it's just for a very short period because we have to have a, the plan together by October first. So it has a short fuse on it, so to speak. But we, you know, we're meeting again next week, and we have the next, maybe two or three meetings a week to try to crank through and get this document together.
And when are you typically meeting?
Um, in, during the weekdays. And we usually meet in the evening between, say, four and six.
Okay.
So I don't know if that works for any of you folks. That work, this is kind of tough.
So anyone willing to step up in the alternate position?
I can do that.
Great, thank you, Jane.
Yeah, Jane, that would be great.
It's a great way to know what's really going on in the town from a budget perspective.
And I would be happy to meet with you before the next meeting and kind of give you an overview of what they do and what the process is and get you set up with some materials to review, so. Take a look at last year's report. Yes, I can get a copy of that for you. Great.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
That's an important role. Anything else for the planers?
Stormwater committee. We need to clarify who is going to be serving on the committee.
Okay.
And I think we have some, I know that Gretchen would like to continue because she's worked on the first iteration of the plan, and Dan and Bill Dussette. We can't have more than three.
Three at a time.
At a time because of.
So it'll be Dan, Gretchen, Bill?
Sure.
All right, and then I'll serve as an alternate. So we can't have four sitting board members or alternates at one meeting without having it publicly noticed? So if someone?
Gavotized as a planning board meeting.
And so I'll just be kept in the loop?
Okay.
All right? And then if one member can't attend a meeting, just let me know?
That would be great. Thank you for all the very.
Okay. Anything else?
Aye.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Enjoy the rest of the evening. Oh, yeah.
I think I, I was.
Yeah.